Five, four, three, two, one.
Welcome to the Hampton Town Council Meeting for April 21st, 2015. Would you please join me now for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next item is Item B, Consent Agenda. Is there any questions on the consent agenda? Do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
Move we accept the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Second.
Senate General approved. The next item is Item C, Public Comments. This is a chance for anybody that has anything that they would like to talk about that is not on the agenda. Now is the chance. Is there any public comment? Seeing none, we'll move on to Item D, Policy Agenda. First one is News, Presentations, and Awards. We have Jim Davitt, our State Representative, that would like to come up and speak at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, for those watching at home, I'm Jim Davitt. I represent District 101, Hampton and Newburgh. And as I'm fond of saying in committee when we make introductions, "The beautiful town of Hampton, along the flowing water is the magnificent Penobscot River, the eagles soaring overhead, and Newburgh, the home of Ricky Craven, full of farms and hard-working people." It's all true, but I still say it to get their attention. I just came here tonight. I have a couple of handouts for you. I serve on the Criminal Justice and Public Safety Committee. We're doing a lot of things in that committee, but as best advice I got when I joined the legislature was, it's not the bills that you introduce, it's important. It's the ones you keep from becoming law. And there are a lot of bills out there that so far we've shot down in all committees. Now, one that is about to be shot down has direct importance for this town. That was a bill that if Denise did not upgrade her voter registration after the next election, you are directed, you will be directed, put an ad in the newspaper pointing out the error of her ways and shame her. It has been, and I'm not kidding on that one, that bill is actually in committee. I think it's going to stay in committee, too. It's kind of typical of some of the strange things we get. And I won't regale you with the many emails and comments we have on the various and sundry gun bills that are coming before us for work session this week. It was quite an interesting experience to see about 150 people show up to argue their positions. We'll see what happens on Friday. I did want to talk a little bit this evening about the budget process and what's going on. I'm not on the Budget Committee, thank you. Our appropriations are taxation, double thank you. But we keep getting the reports from these committees. I have two handouts for you. You can read them at your leisure. And there should be probably enough left for everybody in the room. The budget process, as many of you know, begins when the Governor presents a budget covering all of the departments of this government. It goes to the Taxation Committee, and it goes to Appropriations. Each individual part of that budget process goes to a committee that deals with it. For example, my committee deals with corrections, sheriffs, public safety, anything to do with those. We look at the particular proposed budget. And we make our recommendations back to Appropriations, who then make a decision on what's going to go into the final bill. I am sure you are aware that when the Governor presented his budget back in January, there was a hue and cry as to what is this really going to look like? How's it going to play out? We still don't know exactly because a lot of the parts are being kept from us. And I mean that deliberately. In the past, our committee would get a proposed budget, would cover not only the requests for drug agents, but would also cover requests for court funding, for prison construction, more assistant district attorneys. We could see the entire package. The only thing we got this term was a request for seven DEA agents. And there was nothing in that package we got that had anything to do with dealing with the drug problems in terms of rehabilitation, treatment, prevention. It was all about more agents to lock up more people. And by the way, there's nothing in the budget that we know of that would allow more funding for county jails or state prisons to handle the increased number of individuals charged with these offenses. It's a problem trying to put a budget together. But having said that, there are two things. You understand that Richard Rosen gave you a presentation two weeks ago. This first document against you called the Better Deal, I'm not really happy with that. This came out from the Speaker's office, Proposals and What, Counter Proposals to the Governor's Budget. The second document we received this morning, it's from the Maine Municipal Association, examination of the Governor's Budget, the Better Deal Budget, kind of the pros and cons of each. Some things the Taxation Committee has agreed on. They've accepted a lot of the Governor's proposals on taxes. They did not agree to taxes for hairstylists, amusement parks, and several other very specific issues. One of the biggest inquiries I've had was from people who said they were concerned about their cable TV tax going up. That is still, at this point, in the bill. It would go from 5% to 6%. I was warned by the Chair of the Taxation Committee that don't go out and tell people that that's a done deal, because now it goes to Appropriations, and that's where the real bargaining comes in. There's one thing that is very clear about the budget process so far, that's people on both sides of the aisle are working together on it. Neither side is happy with the whole package. They're trying to come up with compromises that will be, first of all, acceptable to the committees and acceptable to the legislature, and hopefully acceptable to the Governor. But so far, the leadership we've gotten from the second floor, the Governor's people come in to testify, but they're, at least in our committee, they're very long on what they wanted, but very short on how to get there. And it's very difficult to craft a budget on any issue if you don't know why this is in the budget, why this particular item is in, why this particular amount is requested, what is the basis for it. And we have to keep asking ourselves that. In the end, hopefully by about June 1st, we will be working on the final details of the budget, and we will have a budget that's be ready to go to the Governor for signature. Carol knows this perhaps better than any of the else on this council, that May becomes a crunch time when we start working very long hours, trying to get everything basically finished by the 1st of June so we can wrap up the session. We don't know what's going to happen this year. There are a lot of significant issues out there that haven't been addressed yet. There's still more to come before Appropriations and Taxation. Best I can tell you is, A, if you read something in the paper about it, don't necessarily believe it right away, with all due respect to the good reporters here. Though I will say that the Bangin' Deli News has a couple of very excellent reporters down there who managed to get to the heart of the matter and lay it out the way it is. But if you have specific questions about things that might be affecting Hampton, and you're not sure, call me, and I'll find you the answers. There may not be anything I can do, but I can find you the answers and give you an indication of where things are going. But I, on all, oh, revenue sharing, by the way, is back in the budget. It has not been reduced. It's been kept at the same rate as it was last year. Education funding is going to, is staying in. But as I know, you're going into work sessions soon on your own budget. I wish I could tell you more as to what the final figures are going to be. But at this point, it looks pretty sure, pretty clear that both sides of the aisle are going to hold firm on the revenue sharing and hold firm on education. And the bottom line on all of it is that nobody on either side of the aisle wants to see property taxes go up. They want to keep them either at the current rate or lower them if possible. And that's what both sides are trying to achieve. And it's a remarkable process. And there you have my presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Mr. Marble?
Jim, thank you very much for your time. I know you've been busy. It strikes me, looking at the two documents again tonight, and we've seen this before, that there are elements in anyone's version of a budget or a tax plan that are mutually agreed upon and come from initiatives that go back at least 12 years, if not more, about, quote, "getting more non-residents to help chip in," broadening the sales tax, things like that. So I'm looking at the Maine Municipal ones, the ones in purple, and, you know, seeing several places, the same with the blue and white, where it accepts the Governor's proposal, or it's the same in both. And the thing that counters that from a distance, and part of this is reading the paper or watching the news or whatever, is some toxicity in the buildings at times that's just acrimonious and personal. And I'm wondering if I just get a general sense from your time in the halls, how's everyone getting along down there?
Surprisingly well.
Good.
There are, I would be the first to admit, there are a couple of people on both sides of the aisle that I would prefer, you know, stayed away. I'm sure they, some think the same about me. But so far, I've not seen any acrimonious displays. See people talking together. And that's what we were sent there to do. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Stay in touch.
Okay, the next item would be Public Hareings, Amendments to the Sale of Town-Owned Real Estate Ordinance. The Townman is going to give a brief description of that.
The purpose of the changes in this ordinance are to allow the town the ability to affect properties acquired through expiration of foreclosed sewer liens as well as property tax liens, and to also allow, at the time of a sale or redemption of a property, for the town to collect all outstanding taxes, both sewer, personal property, and real estate at the time of that redemption.
Okay, so we'll open it up. Is there a public comment? Anybody would like to speak for the amendment? Seeing none. Is there anybody who would like to speak against? Seeing none. Is there anybody who'd like to speak about it neither for or against? Seeing none. Public comment's closed. What is, a motion from the council?
Make the motion, please.
I make a motion that the council approve the amendments to the sale of town-owned real estate ordinance.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none. All in favor? All opposed? Okay. So next we move on to unfinished business, the Colbuck Road and Amerimane Credit Enhancement Agreement. At this time, Dean Bennett will give a presentation.
Good evening. I bet you thought we were, thought we did this already. Just as a short recap, the Town Council approved the Ameritiff District and Development Program on February 9th of 2015 with some modifications. Those modifications were incorporated into the final submission, and the document was submitted prior to the deadline of February 27th of 2015 to the Office of Economic and Community Development. Meanwhile, after the submission of that document, the credit enhancement agreement, which is a separate function of this process, separate document in this process, gone back and forth between the attorneys trying to get that finalized. On March 27th, the Commissioner of the State of Maine approved the Tiff District and Development Program of Amerimane. And so tonight, the final step in our responsibilities is that although the Town Council has approved the development program that contains the parameters of the credit enhancement agreement, the actual agreement, there again, which is a separate contract, is now ready for your approval and authorization to execute. This is our final act in this process. And once this is approved and executed, assuming that it will be, a copy is sent to the Department of Economic and Community Development for their files.
Any public comment? Questions from the council? Do I have a motion then from the council?
I'll make a motion that we approve the Colbuck Road and Amerimane Credit Enhancement Agreement.
Second.
And authorize the Town Manager to sign the contract.
Second that as well.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Seeing none?
Thank you.
Thank you, Dean. The next item is Item 5, New Business. Conneroy Eagle Scout Bridge Project Services Committee, Council McAvoy.
Thank you, Mayor Ryder. At the April 20, April 13th Services Committee meeting, the Snowmobile Club requested permission to rebuild a bridge over the Sauerdabskut Stream. The committee voted unanimously to recommend approval of this project to the council. I make a motion that the council approve the Snowmobile Club's proposed bridge project.
Second.
Any discussion? It's too late for public comment.
Sorry.
It's okay.
We could make an exception if we love a public comment.
Does the public have any comments that they would like to say? Seeing none? Motion to recommend for the project? So it's a vote?
I'll make a motion that we support the...
We already did it. We already had a motion in a second, so all in favor?
I thought you wanted a motion.
Well, I want a vote, sorry.
A vote.
It's okay. Next item on the new business, 5B, Zoning Ordinance Text Amendment in regards to Conditional Lot Dimensions, Planning Development Committee Recommendation to Refer to Planning Board. Council Shakespeare, do you want to give a brief description of that?
I will. This is, although it's kind of a conundrum, because we did not receive, we discussed this in Planning and Development about the recommending this to, referring it to the Planning Board about the zoning ordinance text amendment we discussed, but we also assumed we were going to receive it from our attorney, which we did not.
Right here.
Right. But we were supposed to receive it this morning or during the day, which we have not. I personally haven't had time to review it, and I can't personally support it yet because of that. And I know there was a couple of others who also mentioned the fact that they, they had wanted to have time to review it. So, you know, this referral recommendation to the council to refer it to the Planning Board was based on us receiving this and being able to review it ahead of time. And we did not, so. I don't know what you want to do.
Well, do we have a motion, what's on the table, to send it to, refer it to Planning Board?
I'd like to make a motion that we send back the zoning ordinance text amendment, Conditional Lot Dimensions, back to Planning Development for reconsideration.
I'll second that.
You send it back to Planning and Development?
Right, that's where it came from.
We had asked for this delivered to us last Thursday, if I remember correctly. So we have time to review it. So we have time to review it. But before we do the, is it okay for me to still speak on this?
Yeah, go ahead.
Before we push, before we push this back to the Planning and Development Board, one of our biggest concerns was to get this in our hands last Thursday so we could review this and make the motion to push this over to the Planning and, or, yes, thank you. Where that did not happen, and it has to go back to Planning and Development so they can get it to us, so we can review it, so we can make an educated decision on this, I don't want to see this pushed off another 30 days. One of our biggest concerns is we're coming into the period where the building contractors are here, things are starting to roll for the time, the snow is gone. If we push this back and push it back and push it back, it's going to be useless for this year. I'm not saying that we should just push it through tonight. I'm saying that we probably should get this in our hand before the end of this week at the latest, and maybe at one of our committee meetings, be able to push this and make a recommendation. I'm open to suggestions on that.
Tom, would you like to explain what the changes were? I think we pretty much discussed it in the last Planning and Development, what the changes were going to be, so everybody was aware of it. So I don't think he's made any changes that we didn't know about in the last Planning and Development meeting. But, Tom, could you clear that up, please?
Yeah. At first, I want to say, you know, why you, why you got it late. The version we had was a PDF document, and I couldn't work with it. We, both Kyle and my legal assistant tried to modify it so we could make changes to it. And apparently Bob just went through and typed it up himself and sent it to me this morning, so that's why it's late. But basically, and I, this is a concern I expressed to Bob, and I assume he gave it to the committee, is the draft that I had, you were eliminating the requirement to have a permit, but you were keeping all the conditions on the granting of a permit. So if you don't require a permit, the conditions don't apply. And so what I did is amended this to put in that, I left in that the Planning Board did issue the permit and made it so that the code enforcement officer would issue the permit, so it would be a speedier process. The conditions are still the same. The other amendments that you had are still the same. And actually, I took out some additional language that I found to be problematic. I don't know if you have it in front of you, but in 4.3.1, at the end, it said that the development of lots must be consistent with wise land use planning. That's not an enforceable standard, so I recommend take it out. And same thing with, on the second page, there was one that's now, "I, the development of a lot shall not preclude the orderly development of the neighborhood and the community." Again, that's not an enforceable standard, so I took that out. And the two things at the bottom of the page that were in red, I just moved them from where they were on the last page and put them in under 4.3.6, 4.5, I'm sorry. And rather than leaving them as orphans, because you took out 2 and 3, so they were part of 2 and 3, but just left there. So those are the basic changes, so I don't, I don't think I've made any substantive change. The only real change is we're still going to require a permit, but it'll be given by the code enforcement officer.
Council Dupree?
I, I think that, like you said, the changes that were made are ones that we discussed anyway, and it's the documents that we expected to have. If we push it back to any committee, we have to wait till the next council meeting to refer it to the Planning Board, which is two more weeks before we can do that. So I, I would be against pushing it back to a committee. I don't think the changes are that significant that we didn't expect anyway.
Council Wal? Did you have a, I thought you wanted to say...
I just wanted a little discussion and just see if there's any way you could get it a little faster.
Well, so we've got a motion in a second to send it back to Planning Development. So do we want to have a vote? All those who want to move it back to Planning Development? All those opposed? Okay.
I'd like to make a motion that we recommend, or send this to the Planning Board for approval.
Second.
What, no.
Discussion?
The change...
For reveal, you mean?
For review.
Any further discussion?
That is the updated version.
The updated version.
Okay. All those in favor? All those opposed? Okay.
If I could, I'd just like to say one thing. I know we, we gave this, made the discussion almost 10 days ago with Bob, and he was supposed to turn it around. It didn't happen until this morning. I just don't know what the delay was, because we're supposed to get it to last Thursday, so, just think the turnaround was not...
Well, when did it get to the council here?
As I said, the, I think, when you meet him last Wednesday?
Yes.
And so Bob contacted me on Thursday, and Kyle and I tried to work on making it something that I could edit, and we couldn't do that because you closed on Friday. So I talked to Bob this morning, and he said, well, I'll just get a Word copy of our ordinance, put in the changes, and send it out, and that's what I worked on. But I couldn't, we couldn't get the PDF to convert to Word and have it be more of a document.
But, but we didn't get it here until tonight.
Right. Well, I got the draft this morning, and I drafted it, and even did it to Denise this afternoon.
Okay. But that's why I say, I didn't get it ahead of time. Just procedures.
All right. Next item, zoning ordinance text amendment in regards to industrial district building height standards, Planning Development Committee Recommendation to Refer to Planning Board.
This is the same kind of, kind of deal, really refers to the MRC area out there, the industrial, and increase the building height because, basically because of that building and for flexibility. And Planning Development Committee recommends that this is referred also to the Planning Board.
So do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we refer this zoning ordinance text amendment for industrial district building height standards to the Planning Board.
A second.
Discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Seeing none? Okay, the next item is Item D, Public Safety Request to Go Out to Bid for New Ambulance, Finance Committee Recommendation. Earlier this evening, we had a meeting of the Finance. Chief Rogers was here explaining that they would like to put out to bid for a new ambulance. We have two. One is a 1996, it's 19, obviously 19 years old, and we have a 2007. They would like to keep the 2007 as a second backup and put out to bid for a new ambulance. It was the vote of the Finance to recommend that we put it out to bid. So here it is for the full council. Any public comment? Okay. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion that we put out to bid, as we discussed in Finance, for a new We don't have to mention coming out of reserves at this moment, do we? Money?
No, just to put it out to bid.
Just to put it out to bid.
My second.
Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? None? Okay. Item E, 2016 Budget Presentation and Proposed Schedule.
First, I need to apologize that you don't have the entire budget in your hand this evening. My hope was that although the charter requires you to have it by May first, that I would have it by this Monday. It's going to be next Monday when you will have it in its entirety so that you have it a week ahead of time for when the first proposed budget schedule meeting is, which is on Monday, May fourth. The budget schedule proposed tries to stick to days that are already committed for a meeting of some type in recognition of the fact that you will have other meetings coming up related to looking for manager and doing those kind of things. The only one that, May twenty-sixth, Tuesday, it says council meeting, it's not a council meeting, it's an infrastructure committee meeting because Monday is Memorial Day. So Tuesday would be the infrastructure committee meeting and that Tuesday, May twenty-sixth, would be a seven PM meeting after infrastructure. And so that's the, the proposed schedule. As I said, they're all on meeting, on dates that another meeting was scheduled with the hope that people had already somewhat ticked those off on their calendar as when they might be coming here anyway. But the other part of this presentation that I want to talk about briefly is the bones of the budget that you'll be seeing in another week and you'll be dissecting starting on May fourth. First, during the goals and objectives meeting that the council held in February, I was asked to provide a budget to the council that maintained the current mill rate while incorporating all increases from RSU twenty-two and Penobscot County, any revenue losses sustained by the town, and any increased fixed costs that the town might have. The budgets that is in process at the moment accomplishes all of those things. The budget that you will be receiving by Monday, April twenty-seventh, keeps service levels as they presently stand. There are no new programs proposed. Public safety remains on an every other year vehicle replacement policy. Public Works is funded as currently exists with a plan that a new director will be reviewing operations in order to provide the council with information for potential changes in the subsequent year. And the proposed budget also will include alternatives that the council can consider if it wishes to look for additional savings. Some of the non-municipal cost increases, RSU twenty-two, as proposed, their budget, which has not been to hearing and is not final. It has to be approved by the voters and then ratified beyond that. But the currently existing budget for Hamden share is up ninety-seven thousand, five hundred and thirty-three dollars and fifty cents. However, the RSU has this year agreed to fully fund the school resource officer for the hundred and eighty-four days that they utilize his services, including their share of the benefit structure that's paid by the town. So in order to do that means the town will be receiving an additional thirty-six thousand, one hundred and twenty-seven dollars in revenue from RSU twenty-two to the town of Hamden to help offset the, to fully offset their use of the school resource officer. Which, if you take the ninety-seven, five thirty-three and subtract off this additional thirty-six thousand and change in revenue, the net increase for the school budget this year is sixty-one thousand, four hundred and six dollars and fifty cents, which is a dramatic difference from two years ago when it was three hundred and fifty thousand and last year when it was almost four hundred thousand dollars in increase. And that, I will tell you, is the main reason that this budget can come in the way that it is. But there's more. New valuation estimates right now, not including monies in TIF districts set aside as part of the AMIRA program, just other new valuation, is approximately seven million dollars. That seven million dollars at the present mill rate will generate a hundred and twenty-two thousand, five hundred dollars to help offset costs. Revenue sharing, as you heard earlier, is, um, back in the budget, not just for one year, but for the two years of this, not at the five percent it's supposed to be, but at the percent it already is, which means we would not have to be looking for, to replace that three hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars in either of the next two budget years. Excise tax collections continue to increase and it will be possible to budget an additional fifty thousand from excise in this fifteen, sixteen year. We, in this year, we budgeted one million, five hundred and fifty thousand to be received from excise tax and in, um, the coming year, that estimate will be one million, six hundred thousand dollars. The town has traditionally used approximately four hundred thousand dollars a year of fund balance to offset property taxes. And it's not possible to do that this year because of, we've used that to the point where our fund balance is dangerously low. And I'm recommending in this year's budget that we have our normal usage, which means that we will be reducing fund balance use to two hundred thousand for, from the four hundred thousand. The council asked to look at health insurance changes this year and I have identified some programs and ways that the town can save nearly a hundred thousand dollars annually in changing in health plans, but establishing a health reimbursement account to offset increased employee deductibles. And since the goal is reduce costs, but not necessarily, not, um, to leave the employees with poor health insurance, if we can save nearly a hundred thousand dollars a year on this program, then I, I'm in hopes that the council will be in favor of that approach to this issue. And I'm currently in the process of, um, conducting negotiations with our unions, police and fire, and, um, they're amenable to this discussion. So I think this is important that we look at it. Saturday's bus service alternatives, um, it appears from my recent services committee meeting that Saturday bus service is going to be on the, uh, table again this year and likely will not emerge in its current form. So there's, um, some savings budgeted in from that. I was able to lock in fuel and diesel prices for the coming year at a rate of two dol, two point one eight eight. And last year, when we were budgeting for fuel, we budgeted for three dollars and sixty cents for fuel oil. So the, the difference in our budgeting practices for fuel and diesel will allow us to save about thirty-five thousand, three hundred dollars from last year's budgeting on those items. And also, the enterprise accounts for the scan center and the pool, who are, which are, these amounts are paid by fees, their, um, savings should be about twenty-seven thousand, six hundred from this same contract, so. And we also can lock in propane for seventy-five cents less a gallon than we did in this current year. Those are all really good savings. Impacts of changes made in two thousand fourteen, fifteen. The net impact to the fifteen, sixteen budget by the reduction of the one person that we did in staffing in Public Works last year, if you remember, we did that from half a year on. The additional savings for an entire year at one reduced person is an additional thirty-three thousand, one hundred and fifty-four dollars less. The planning position, um, the net impact for an entire year of that would be an additional twenty-seven thousand, eight thirty-eight if the position remains as it currently stands. Increases that are considered in the budget include being funding fifty percent of the hundred and twenty thousand dollar town share for the sidewalk, that was the Western Avenue project. Rehab and, or replacement of the trackless sidewalk plow. Cost of living wages for all employees estimated at one percent, based on the CPI. And a wage and benefit reserve funded to allow your new manager flexibility in staffing changes that may be necessary. That is, um, in recognition that I, I, I'm not sure the organization will look exactly like it looks right now and there needs to be some money there for that if the new manager wishes to, and the council wished to make changes that allow for that. So that, that's kind of the, uh, the overview of the budget. The, the important, well, to me, part, number one, is that it retains services at what I consider a high level. Number two, it, it maintains the mill rate, which was a, a request and what, back in February, without knowing what the other moving pieces were, was, I would have sworn would be an impossibility. But without things that would be tremendously damaging. And it appears that that's not the case. That said, this, this, once you get it, it becomes your baby and your actions with it, adding, subtracting, whatever, will determine where we end up at the end of the day.
Thank you. The next item, item F, possible violation of code of ethics by a town counselor. Counselor Saroyes.
At this time, through conversations and counsel that I've had, the item I wanted to bring to the attention of everyone is really not a code of ethics violation. It does speak to someone's integrity and character, but again, it is not a code of ethics violation, so we'll not move into executive session.
Thank you. Next items, committee reports. Counselor McAvoy, services.
Thank you, Mayor Ryder. At the April thirteenth Services Committee, we covered a lot of territory. One subject was a snowmobile bridge, which we voted on earlier. We're waiting on further information regarding how much and when the franchise disbursement will arrive from Time Warner. The Cable Consortium is meeting on the twenty-second of April and any updated information will be presented at the Finance Committee meeting on May fourth. And we should be in a better position regarding how we will proceed on upgrading the television equipment in this chamber. Counselor Shakespeare informed the committee that he was confident that there would be sufficient volunteer support to ensure that the Children's Day will go on as planned. Thank you. The Veterans Memorial was discussed briefly. The town manager had a meeting with Craig Snow on the fourteenth of April and she will be sharing the outcome with the committee at the next meeting on May eleventh. And the committee also had an extensive discussion about the continuation of the Saturday bus service. The town manager captured the gist of the meeting in a rendition of the minutes, so I'll just simply read that to you. And this is following the Ms. Larkin's presentation. Following the presentation and question and answer session with Ms. Larkin from Penquess, the committee discussed concerns related to the cost of Saturday bus service related to the actual number of Hamden residents served. Several committee members indicated that the service numbers for Hamden residents were impossible to know since the part of the Hamden route also serves the city of Bangor. Other committee members thought that the Monday through Friday should be sufficient because that is when people have such things as doctor appointments or when they attend classes. Based on information from Ms. Larkin, it may be possible to use some sort of contracted service for Saturday service in place of the Saturday service with the Community Connector. The manager reminded counselors that any change considered would require a public hearing both in the town of Hamden and in Bangor by the Community Connector program. Counselor Marble cited the difference in population served by the two different entities, with the Lynx being a social service operation and the Community Connector being a public transportation. He had concerns that not, that there not be any stigma attached to the use of public transportation. And that pretty well sums it up, but it will be back on the agenda whenever the next one is, when did I say it was? May eleventh, the bus will be back on there. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor McAvoy. Infrastructure, Counselor Marble.
Well, I hope we haven't had a meeting since the last council meeting because I have nothing prepared for remarks.
Very good, thank you. Counselor Shakespeare, Planning and Development.
Uh, the two items we discussed this, this evening and referred to the Planning Board is, are, are exactly the two items we discussed at Planning Development, which was the zoning ordinance text amendment for conditional lot dimensions. And we referred that to the council to refer it to the Planning Board. And the other one was, um, what we did this evening was zoning ordinance text amendment of industrial district building height standards, and we referred that.
I didn't get it either, sorry Bill.
This, Terry's computer's talking to him. We referred that to the council and then referred, referred that to the Planning Board. And that's what we discussed at Planning and Development. These computers are wonderful, huh?
Thank you, Counselor Shakespeare. And then on finance tonight, as we discussed, we, uh, agreed to put out to bid for a new town ambulance. So with that, next item would be the manager's report.
May, may I say about that ambulance first of all? I think we forgot to tell the public that that's all coming out of reserve money, not out of taxes per se, nothing new, so.
Sewer liens for unpaid sewer bills from two quarters in two thousand fourteen that remained unpaid as of April sixteenth, two thousand fifteen are being placed this week. There are sixty-eight liens being placed out of a total user base of one thousand, five hundred and thirteen accounts, or approximately four point five percent. Another reminder that the street stream cleanup will be on Saturday, May ninth, starting at nine here at the town office. I am on schedule to have a name for confirmation by the town council at the May fourth meeting for a new public works director. Many thanks to Mayor David Ryder and Counselor Terry McAvoy for their assistance in this process and participating in the interviews and providing valuable feedback. We are fortunate to have some excellent candidates for this position. Time Warner has responded to the request for information regarding contract renewal and the next meeting will be to discuss what the next step should be in response to that, and that's tomorrow afternoon. As to paving bids, the town is advertising for bids for its two thousand fifteen paving program and will have the results of those for the Infrastructure Committee meeting in May. Route one A Old County sewer line bid. The Water District received bids on their project and are selecting gardener construction of Herman. Their price on the sewer line replacement for the town, that, that no obligation bid, was twenty-one thousand dollars and this item will be on the Infrastructure Committee agenda for Monday, April twenty-seventh for discussion. And for those of you who remembered, we started this some time ago, the, the codification of the town's ordinances. I've received the book, and it is a book, um, from General Code in regard to the evaluation conducted related to the codification of our ordinances. I received it Thursday and have not yet had a chance to review it. I've also given a copy to Bob, the planner, to review. What this, um, book is, is a review of all of our ordinances for any items in them that may need action by the council to make them consistent either with each other or state or federal law.
Thank you. The next item would be counselor comments. We'll start with, um, Counselor Wal. We're jumping around.
I actually don't have any comments other than I look forward to, um, the budget process that looks like we're going to get into the meat and potatoes in the next coming weeks, so. Have a great evening, everybody.
Counselor Dupre?
I have no comments.
Counselor Shakespeare?
Just, I don't think it was brought up this evening, that tomorrow evening is, and is on the town website, is a public meeting for the town, inviting citizens, businesses and organizations to a public meeting to be held at seven, seven PM, uh, in the municipal building council chambers right here tomorrow evening.
Thank you. Counselor Marble?
No comment, thanks.
Counselor Saroyes?
Yeah, I just would like to thank Sue again, or Susan again, for their work on the budget. I have worked with this budget last year, but I've worked with budgets my whole career. I've managed budgets, I create budgets and review budgets. And, um, you know, just going through the highlights, we're very, very lucky to have someone like Sue that knows the ins and outs of this budget like she does, is able to provide us with the savings, so in turn, we don't see an increase in the mill rate. So, uh, thank you, Susan. That talent and you will be missed, appreciate it.
Thank you. Counselor McAvoy?
Thank you. Mother Nature is relenting. I'm fairly confident spring is here, as nasty as it might be, but it is here. So remember, shop local, buy American. Good night, Hamden.
Thank you. And I have no comment at this time. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you very much.